Meeting of the City of Fort Lauderdale is December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. As always, we begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. But before we do that, I'd like to take a moment and reflect upon the life of a gentleman who just recently passed away in our city. His name was Ron McGuire. He was the president of Jackson Towers for quite a while and certainly became an important voice as change occurred in and around that neighborhood. And so if we could just take a moment and respect Mr. McGuire with a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. And if I could ask you all to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas. Vice Mayor Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie.
He's at Walmart.
Here. No, I'm not.
Okay.
I'm right here.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Walmart was the shop with a cop today.
Oh.
FOP, it's six year doing it. And so I had to take off and go up there.
Nice.
Sorensen here.
And Mayor Trent House.
Here. So I'm just going to take a moment and read this before we begin our meeting. So the City of Fort Lauderdale is hosting commission meetings in both a virtual and in-person format. The public will be able to listen to and view the commission meetings at the following sites. On YouTube, that's WWW.Youtube.com/CityOfFortLauderdale, all spelt out, as well as on our fabulous Comcast Channel seventy-eight and Channel ninety-nine, if you are in the U-verse of AT&amp;T. To speak on an agenda item, please click on the link below. It is bit, B as in boy, bit, B-I-T dot L-Y forward slash virtual CC meetings. That's bit dot L-Y forward slash virtual CC meetings, if you want to speak on any agenda item. Now, to help ensure the quorum, we please ask that you abide by the following guidelines. Number one, please refrain from any behavior that's disruptive, destructive, profane, or inhibits the meeting in any way. Two, while you're on the phone waiting for your opportunity to speak, please mute the meeting broadcasts if you're watching on FL TV, YouTube, Comcast, or AT&amp;T, if you're watching simultaneously in order to avoid the delay in the broadcast. I'll call on you when it's your turn to speak and also notify you when your time has expired. City staff has automatically added speakers in the two-list, excuse me, listen-only mode, and you'll be unmuted to speak when recognized. Once you have completed speaking, you will be muted and may either hang up to exit the meeting or stay connected to listen to the remainder of the meeting. Okay, so we have one agenda announcement, that's CP eight. The background of the memo has been revised. Now, before we begin to, I have a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda for tonight.
So move, Mayor, and I have one amendment.
So we have a motion to remove, on the minutes or the agenda?
On the minutes, I'm sorry.
Which is that?
On the December second minutes of the regular meeting, on page eight, item R-two, I believe earlier in the day before that commission meeting, we actually did receive an updated agenda that corrected that R-two to Commission District four, but the minutes still say Commission District two.
Okay, so your motion is to approve the minutes as amended, as well as the agenda. Are there any other modifications, changes to the motion? Okay, do I hear a second? Do I hear? Commissioner Sorensen, did you second it?
Second, second, Sorensen.
Okay. Okay, please call the roll.
Can I just make a procedural? In the, in the, in the, the minutes reflect the agenda, the way the agenda went out. So if we make the correction to the agenda.
He's making a correction to the minutes.
Right, but I'm talking about the.
Agenda.
Right, the actual agenda.
Was in error.
But we made that correction on the record.
Right.
So normally, we would just have the item in there the way it was presented, and then the minutes would reflect the correction.
But they don't. They don't reflect the correction. I mean, it's not a big issue.
Well, the only reason I bring it up is because we, we make a lot of, we change a lot of things before, like tonight, we changed CPA.
Right.
So if we change something, maybe the city attorney can win.
Right, I think what he was trying to say is, we had the wrong district, but the minutes reflect the errors, and it's have to reflect the error. It has to reflect what occurred.
But shouldn't the minutes also reflect the action taken to correct the error?
And to some extent, your record does, because you did fix that, but it, I believe that's the point that the clerk's trying to make, with the minutes, you have to be careful in amending them, because it has to reflect what occurred and an error occurred, and the minutes have to reflect that error.
Is there?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could just make a suggestion, because on those same minutes, on page one, under announcements, there were several announcements, and one of them is that R-two revision district listed in the commission agenda memo, maybe that should just go a little bit further and say from District two to District four, so then anyone that is reading the minutes would see that under the announcement and then know that that's, you know, reflective of what happened. It's just not specific enough, but it is actually addressed, sort of, under the announcements in those minutes, it is.
So what are we doing here? I'm confused.
So if I can make a suggestion, then what, what we would do is just be a little more clear when we read the changes to the agenda of.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, but, but going forward, minutes should always reflect the actions taken by the commission. We can't assume that person's going to refer to another place in the minutes to try to see what happened and, 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 and in this particular instance, we're only talking about something insignificant, like which district it affects. But, but going forward, like this afternoon, there was some confusion as to where the backup was reflecting the, the, the exchange that the advisory board would have had at the CRA Advisory Board level, and one of the commissioners, in fact, it was Commissioner, Vice Mayor, who felt that we didn't have the full backup, but you said we did have the full backup, but it was misdated, so it wasn't really reflective of what, what really happened. I mean, it's very confusing, and, and, you know, the minutes are the final record of what this, you know, what this commission does, or what any board does, and if they're not accurate, then, then, you know, should we ever be in litigation, or should we ever find ourselves wanting to research an item? It's not going to be consistent and there's going to be confusion. So we just ask that it be consistent. All right, so what's the motion? The motion is just to accept the minutes and the agenda as is? Is that what you're asking? I mean, come on, it's six fifteen, let's get going. What do we want here? Is it, can we amend it? Can we amend the agenda? But I mean, can we amend the minutes, or do we have to leave them the way they are?
You have to leave it alone, based on what it's saying.
Or did you suggest that you just add some more detail just to that particular item, so it knows from two to four?
I could do that, yes.
We'll just do that.
So what is that?
It would be as amended.
As amended, okay. So Vice Mayor, your motion is to approve the minutes as amended and the agenda, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Sorensen, that you seconded that?
Yes.
Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas. Vice Mayor Glassman.
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Yes.
Mayor Trent House.
Yes. I hope that's the most difficult thing we have to vote on tonight. So tonight, we have a presentation, and this presentation is going to be a virtual presentation, and it's with regard to, it's regard to an organization accepting the Well Being Award for Outstanding Culture of Wellbeing. And tonight, Malena Mayea, who's the Cigna Senior Engagement Consultant, and Carrie Holden, who's Cigna's On-Site Wellness Coordinator for the City of Fort Lauderdale, are going to appear virtually, and our city is going to be the recipient of the 2020 Cigna Wellbeing Award for Outstanding Culture of Wellbeing. Malena, are you there?
Good afternoon, Mayor, this is Carrie Holden, the City of Fort Lauderdale's On-Site Wellness Coordinator with Cigna.
Yes, is your counterpart from Cigna there?
She is on the line, she's listening.
She's listening. Okay, does she have her ear up to your phone or something? I mean, is she, can she appear separately?
Um, I don't know if she has video capability, but I'll be presenting.
Okay, that's fine. So the floor is yours, Carrie.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and City officials, I am Carrie Holden, the City of Fort Lauderdale's On-Site Wellness Coordinator with Cigna Health Insurance. I'm here with Malena Maya, the City's Senior Engagement Consultant with Cigna. The City of Fort Lauderdale is the recipient of the 2020 Cigna Wellbeing Award, which recognizes passion and investment in employee health and overall wellbeing. One of our sayings with our wellness program is, what's the difference between wellness and illness? Wellness has a "we" in it, and illness has an "I." This award is a tribute to the city's executive leadership involvement with creating a culture where opportunities are presented for employees to engage in their health and connect with healthcare through preventive screenings. We celebrate the annual breast cancer awareness event at the Florida Executive Airport in October, deliver onsite biometric screenings in partnership with Holy Cross Hospital, knowing how important it is for you to know your numbers, and conveniently organize mammography screening bands with Boca Regional Hospital outside of city buildings. The city's Health and Wellness Center supports employees and their families with patient-centered care to improve health. I am excited to continue on this path to health improvement with the City of Fort Lauderdale as we continue to strive for more, strive for better health. I am pleased to honor the City of Fort Lauderdale with the 2020 Cigna Outstanding Culture of Wellbeing Award.
Wonderful, well, thank you so much, we really, really appreciate that. Chris, do you have any comments with regard to this?
I don't, other than just to thank our staff and our Human Resources Department for leading the initiative with the city, and we appreciate the partner that we have in Cigna and our employees that utilize the services. So let me turn it over and see if, if there are any comments that we want to offer on behalf of our benefits team.
Sure.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. For those who don't know me, I'm Michael Niftanyan, the Benefits Manager for the City of Fort Lauderdale. With me here is Tina Patrick Nanny, she's the Benefits Assistant and the, actually the submitter of the winning application. In her hand, as, playing banner white today, she is going to be holding the, the beautiful award that was presented to the City of Fort Lauderdale for our outstanding culture of wellbeing. Tina is the backbone of the benefit staff, and she is the frontline recipient of, for service and exceptional service for our employees. We proudly and graciously, humbly, accept the 2020 Cigna Wellbeing Award on behalf of the City of Fort Lauderdale and its employees. The city's Wellness Incentive Program, better known as WIP, was designed to create a culture of health and wellness within the City of Fort Lauderdale by providing wellness-related activities throughout the year and to engage and encourage our employees to become healthier and happier at work and at home. The City of Fort Lauderdale and its HR Benefit Staff are committed to city employees' overall health and wellbeing. The Benefit Section of the Human Resources Department, known as the Benefits Team, in coordination with Cigna, is responsible for providing employees with information about their health benefits and to promote wellness-related activities to encourage, engage, and to take charge of and improve their health and happiness while at work or at home. The Benefit Team are the most dedicated and passionate group of professionals that you will ever meet and continually help make a difference in the lives of our employees, retirees, and dependents daily. This is a true story that actually happened at one of our locations. I knew that we were doing something special when, one day, a few years back, pre-COVID, we were performing onsite outreach wellness education programs throughout the city, as we typically do, and an employee in one of the city vehicles, I was in the parking lot wrapping up a presentation, rolled down the window and said to me, he wanted to thank me for saving his, helping to save his life. Now, I'm the Benefits Manager, so I typically don't get that kind of thank you, but I naturally inquired on how I, how I achieved that. The employee explained to me that he attended one of the Benefits Wellness Presentations, and it was encouraged to perform a biometric screening, better known as a finger stick, which he did, and it indicated some elevated results. He was then referred to a physician, in this case, it was the city's Health and Wellness Center, and he later was diagnosed with early stages of cancer. The good news is that he was caught early and successfully in remission and has been working continuously. He wanted to personally thank me for giving him the opportunity to enjoy the holiday season with his family. He later explained that had he not been at one of the wellness presentations and had not performed, not been at one of the. and had not performed, had not been at one of the presentations and learned and was educated, that he would not be there today to have this conversation with me. Of course, that throws chills down your spine and it's a story that will forever be embedded in my life. First and foremost, I'd like to personally introduce and thank the HR benefits team who are here today. They, I'm so very, very, very proud of their accomplishments every day. Other than Tina, who's here with me, we have John Gaskins, Jr. Many of you know John is our veteran senior. He's a well respected senior member of the benefits team and he's commonly known as the all star of our employee benefits staff. We also have Michael Williams, who's a benefit specialist as well. He, Mike is an impeccable work ethic. His honesty and his integrity speaks for itself. I don't think it goes without saying. We also have with us is Melissa Ferrer, who's our senior accounting clerk, not only responsible for paying all of the bills and doing all the behind the scene work, but she's the catalyst and the glue that keeps this benefits team together and is able to promote the wellness throughout the city. Also, I'd like to thank the the city's Health and Wellness Center staff, Dr. Perla Delpino White, and the staff there for helping our employees and be well and promote the wellness initiative that the city provides to our employees. And also, of course, I would like to thank Carrie Holden, the presenter of the award, our onsite wellness, Cigna Wellness Coordinator. She's part of our team. She's fully dedicated to the city employees, the retirees, their families. Day or night, she's on call, contacting, constructing and implementing the successful programs that the city of Fort Lauderdale provides to its employees. And we're very proud of all of our accomplishments as a result of winning the award. But in closing, I would especially like to thank the Assistant City Manager and our HR Director, Ms. Harleisha Smith, our Deputy Director, Jerome Post, and our HR Risk Manager, Guy Hind, who's also here today, and the entire HR family for their ongoing support, dedication and help to set a positive tone and open the door to allow us to build a successful program and based on the city's values of integrity, compassion, accountability, respect and excellence. And that's what we strive for daily. And we hope we make a difference to our employees because that's what we're here for. We thank you and humbly appreciate it. Thank you. Even though that Tower of Lucite looks impressive, it certainly doesn't compare to the amount of work and dedication you provide to our city. So thank you so much for keeping us healthy. Thank you. All right. So at this point, we move on to what's called the consent agenda. For those of you who are appearing or watching this meeting for the first time, thank you again, everybody. Appreciate it. This is when the city commission will consider the group of consent agenda items all at once and will be able to vote on them all at once. The exception to that is if if a commissioner chooses to select a particular consent agenda item and pull it, and at that time, anyone from the from the public would be able to speak on that agenda item when that item comes up. Otherwise, if there's a consent agenda item that has not been pulled, then we invite you to speak at the beginning on any item that you choose, and you have three minutes in which to do that. So before I call upon the public to see if anyone's interested in speaking, I'd ask any member of the city commission if they have any agenda items that they would like to pull. I first like to ask Commissioner Moritas, are there any agenda items that you would like to pull?
No, thank you, Mayor.
None. Vice Mayor?
None. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, Commissioner McKenzie?
None, Mayor.
Okay, and Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes. Let's pull CR three, Charlie Romeo three.
CR three.
And?
Is that military talk?
That's Navy speak. Yeah, we're getting you, we're getting you spun off here. We're going to put you on a ship before it's all over. Send you the Greek Isles.
I'll be the first there.
Then the other one I'd like to pull, Mayor, is, let's see, CP one, Charlie Paul one. Thank you. That's it. Those two.
Okay.
Over now.
Ten four. So so other than CR three and CP one, is there any member of the public that would like to speak on any other agenda item? Let's see. I have no one who signed up to speak in front of me, just CP one. I have one person interested in speaking. So, okay, no one else has signed up? Okay. So except for CR three and CP one, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Moved.
Commissioner Sorenson has moved the items. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And seconded by Commissioner Moritas. Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, and those consent agenda items are now approved. Uh, CR three, Commissioner Sorenson?
Thanks, Mayor. So we had, we had talked a little bit about this as a commission at an earlier date, dealing with the Riverwalk Center. And I I continue to be really interested in exploring the possibility of some type of affordable workforce, workforce housing at this location. And I, I think that our realtors can had kind of indicated as such when kind of went out on the street and want to follow up with that in terms of maybe Chris or just feedback around that that possibility and exploring that further.
Yes, so the commission adopted a resolution some time ago directing us to put this property onto the market to see what kind of interest we would have for development partner proposal in it. We did receive three responses. None of them did include a workforce or affordable component. So that's not on the table at this point. This item that's in front of the commission tonight is to extend a due diligence period to continue to negotiate for a kind of development agreement with the Riverwalk Center parking deck. But if you're Commissioner, if the interest is in an affordable and workforce housing project, we did advertise with that as a desire. We just didn't receive a response that had that included as a component.
Yeah, and I'm trying to just think through, I mean, are there any ways to further entice that possibility or, I don't know, increase the possibility of that?
I mean, you can entice it through requirement. That's an easy enticement.
Well, can I, can I chime in here a little bit?
Sure.
Commissioner Sorenson, I too had a concern about CR three. If you didn't pull it, I was going to pull it.
Yeah.
My concern is that, you know, I know we're still in the middle of negotiation, but we're looking to, right now, the terms of this concern me because we're looking at like fifty five years that the city is going to be beholden to, to a company who's going to pretty much have complete rights to this site. And that's a long time. I mean, fifty five years. And I can tell you right now, if the pace of development in Fort Lauderdale, especially downtown development in Fort Lauderdale continues the way it has in the last ten or fifteen years, this would be, this site would be an anomaly for what is happening in and around it. There's so much intense development happening downtown that, that to allow us to be shackled with a lease for fifty five years for a parking garage that sits in the middle of a redevelopment area, I don't know if that's the best business model that we would want to follow. In fact, we've talked, I've talked privately with our city manager, but I can now talk publicly with all of you, that I even put out the possibility of maybe leveling the the site and actually putting it out there for something that's more consistent with what's going on in and around the area. We've even talked about maybe inviting, you know, the Panthers to build their stadium down there and, you know, build both parking garages and build rather than feel like we're that we're stuck with what we have there. They were talking about investing sixty million dollars to rehabilitate the parking garage. Well, you could build a new parking garage for sixteen million dollars. So, you know, it just seems like a lot of good money being thrown after bad. And I really think that we should, you know, we're now in the business of rethinking our downtown, you know, the joint meeting we had with the county today. I think this is an opportunity for us to step back and say, wait a minute, is this really what we want? Because I know when we put out the RFP, it was like, let's see if we could just slap some, you know, lipstick on a pig and see what we can get out of, you know, the shops down there. I don't know whether that's the direction we should be going in. What do you, what do you think, Commissioner?
Yeah, I agree. I completely agree with you. I think there's a lot of creative approaches to this important parcel in our downtown. And and maybe, Mayor, maybe it's just kind of, and I'm happy to, you know, kind of take this on of just talking more with community stakeholders and folks out there, just say, let's think big picture and think out of the box here. And what are some things we could do here? What are some possibilities? Because I feel, I'd like to explore that a little bit more before we make that long of a commitment to your point. And also, Mayor, you know, when you talk to a lot of developers today, what they say is they're building less parking or they're building parking that can convert into units because they just aren't sure how, what the demand of cars and parking and so forth is going to be. So I just, I'd like to explore this more before we commit.
Okay.
Make a suggestion that, even if, well, even if that's the case, I think it would be appropriate tonight to approve this item what's before you, because all it does is extend the due diligence period. It will allow us to continue to keep talking. You're not approving a project tonight. But rather than using the, this item as a way to either start or stop the project, there's no harm in extending the due diligence period because it will be back before this commission.
But I don't want to send out the wrong signal that, like, these terms are what we're really interested when it appears that we're not interested in that.
A deferral doesn't really.
No, but I mean, what's the point? I'm sorry.
Under Resolution twenty dash one nine nine, you already stated that you accepted their bid as proposed for us to go and negotiate the lease. So you sort of have sort of given that green light with regards to what they proposed. So if, I mean, you'd have to essentially, if you're gonna, if all bets are off, then you almost have to rescind that resolution at some point. What the commission's pleasure is with regards to this, but the due diligence would be to negotiate a lease. But if, again, that's, that's based on a proposal that was submitted and accepted by the commission. So if that completely changes, I don't know what we're negotiating.
We would need to then rescind that resolution.
And scrap the whole thing, I guess, if that's the will of the commission. Because right now, there's, I don't know what we'd negotiate.
Yeah, what, what, what's the, what are the repercussions? Since we agreed to do this some months back, right?
Well, October twentieth.
Right. So what's, what's the repercussions of our actions to, to stop it now?
The resolutions specifically state that you reserve your right to reject the lease if the terms and conditions are not acceptable in your sole and absolute discretion. So you have pretty broad ability to do that.
Oh, so we have, so we could do that?
Yeah, you're not, you're not beholden to. Yeah, correct. You're, you do have that flexibility.
But that's the desire, what we want to do. I don't see what the hesitation is. You know what I mean?
There are other, there are other things that we would have to do differently if we were to take that path. I would need to come back before you with a recommendation for some much needed maintenance and how we would program that and how we would fund that. So there are some other things that would trigger and that we would have to have to put it out.
Here's what I'd like to do is, I'd like to maybe defer this for like two or three months. And that way we can kind of start exploring a little bit. This is still on the table. And I think it could create some, I don't know, some, some interest and possibly with the Styles Corporation or others, you know, possibly trying to help come up with some ideas and solutions. So I'd say defer it for three months.
I don't think deferral is an option, especially for three months under the charter. I'm trying to pull up the revision, the provision now, but you have a certain amount of time to do this under section eight point oh nine under the charter because it's a lease. So we're constrained by time. So we wouldn't be able to do that for three months. And then there's the idea of, you know, if you change the whole project completely, then you essentially would put that back out. It's not like a true solicitation, but we'd have to look at eight oh nine to see what our options are with regards to being able to do that and completely change the project with the bid that was, granted, it was the only bid submitted, but I don't, without having the solicitation in front of me, there were two others. Okay, so then if we put out a solicitation, I would not recommend picking one and then completely changing the project because there would be an element of unfairness to the others that subject, that provided proposals and were ultimately rejected. So we'd have to start the process a little longer.
Well, I'm not against that. Yes, Commissioner?
All right. So I'm following this. Are we, have we talked to Styles about this, by the way? I mean, or do they know anything about this?
We would need to engage with them. No, they, they're moving forward with the negotiation as we've started with them based upon the resolution of this commission. So I certainly, if the commission takes opposite action tonight, then I would be engaged with them either later tonight or tomorrow morning.
Okay, I'd be curious to see what the business community thinks. I know Commissioner Sorenson was talking about maybe getting the pulse of some people in the downtown community, see what could go there. I guess we would just do a different, an RFP or a solicitor proposal or something like that if we're changing paths. Is that what we're saying?
It depends on what you would want. If it's a leasing option, you probably would travel again under section eight oh nine. If you want a solicitation for P three, then you would do similar to what we're doing with the UDPA. You'd actually come up with a design criteria package. You'd put out there exactly what you want in the form of an RFP or RFQ or something.
Or, or someone could come to us with an unsolicited proposal if they really wanted to, if they hear these conversations, like we're open for some ideas. Okay, just not quite sure what we're doing then tonight, but I'll keep listening.
I would just follow up very quickly to say that when we talk unsolicited proposal, if we're talking that and residential, those don't marry up very well because there's a limited public purpose that we could argue there. So I don't really think that that would be the mechanism we would choose.
Okay, well, the mayor mentioned something about Panther. So I just, I'm not sure what we're thinking of. I have, this is the first I'm kind of hearing of it. So, all right, thanks.
No, this is the first time, you know, I'm just putting out, there's just words right now. I'm just, there's nothing's been discussed. They don't even know that I've said this. You know, the point that I was trying to make from the start was that I think that we are shackling ourselves with a fifty five year lease to keep a parking garage there. And, and, and let's not make the same mistake, for example, with the Bahia Mar, where we entered into a fifty year lease with an entity that ultimately sold, sold the business, sold the lease to another entity, who has since decided to chop up their interests into different, into sub leases. And in the meantime, here we are years later, we still don't have any kind of development project that is consistent with the goals of this community. And, and now we're talking about a fifty five year lease to, to keep a parking garage there in the middle of a redevelopment area. And by the end of fifty five years, I can guarantee you the neighborhood will have changed significantly. Maybe in ten years or maybe fifteen years. I'm just saying that I just think that we're tying our hands if we enter into a fifty five year lease, which is essentially what this deal is all about. And I'm not sure that was well thought out. And maybe we didn't realize, you know, the impact of what this was going to entail when we first discussed this in October. So if, if according to the city attorney, we have the opportunity to opt out, I'm just suggesting we opt out now rather than continuing this process and leading the applicant, leading them on and thinking that we really want to go into a lease of this sort.
And Alan, what's the, I'm looking at the cam and we've got staff, it says staff recommends Resolution twenty dash one nine nine by establishing new public hearing date to bring forth the lease by April twenty, twenty twenty one. What's our, is that our deadline? What's our deadlines that you're operating off of?
That would be the new deadline if you were to approve this item tonight.
Right. Yep. And, and you said you can't delay it, Alan. So I'm just trying to figure out what limits.
Well, we can, we can extend due diligence with agreement of the parties, but if it's going to be a matter of let's pull back and consider new ideas for this, that's a little bit different. One is, is additional time to negotiate the lease. The other is, let's figure out what we want to do with this property. The other is, let's figure out what we want to do with this property. So that's a little different.
Okay, and then in my mind, it's, you know, Styles, if, you know, I'm happy to talk with Styles and maybe they've got, you know, give them this feedback of what we talked about and maybe they're gonna, they'll have some different ideas. I don't.
That's the problem. We put out a solicitation with specificity. And we have three proposers come in. We selected one as being.
Okay, so you can't have any change. Okay, all right, then I think we kill it. Let's kill it if we can't do anything different to it.
I agree.
Yeah. Okay, so how do we do that, Alan?
So when, someone needs to make a motion to approve and then we just vote against it. Correct?
It's a resolution, I believe.
Someone introduced a resolution and then we vote against it.
Okay, Alan, is that, is that right?
Well, there'll, there'll need to be follow-up. Probably you'll have to.
There's other steps we're gonna have to.
Yeah, well, there's other steps we're gonna have to take. You probably have rescission of the resolution and, but for, for tonight's item, if you're not, if you don't want, the only, the only item before you is to extend the due diligence period. If you're voting no on that, that's fine. But with regards to the rest of what the commission may or may want to do with this project or this particular project or this property, we're gonna have to do some follow-ups, test, possibly rescinding some resolutions.
Okay. All right, so Mayor, I'll introduce it with intention of voting no.
Okay.
Mayor, one, one last question.
Yes, ma'am.
From my mind, so I can understand this. Since we did already vote on the, in October, I mean, how much time have we asked Styles to already kind of put into this whole process of coming up with some kind of proposal? And then, I don't know, I guess if we're, I, I mean, I know we can change our minds to, you know, direct the city in a way we choose to direct it, but I guess it would be, it would have been better to change our minds earlier than later, but you know, maybe we didn't know or we didn't.
You're absolutely right, but we're talking about, you know, a very valuable piece of property. We're talking about the city's future. If we have an opportunity to reverse ourselves, I don't think, you know, they would be at, you know, Styles may even prefer what we're thinking about. You know, they're in the process, they're in the business of building buildings, you know, not renovating parking.
They may have a great idea, Mayor, to what to do here. Like, much better if we, you know.
Honestly, I'd like to see them build the university tower. You know, I've talked to, I've talked to Broward College, this past year about building a second tower. FAU would love to see it, so would Nova. You know, they'd love to expand their downtown Fort Lauderdale presence. So, so, I mean, I don't think we're hurting anybody, if that's what you're thinking, Commissioner.
I'm just wondering what maybe, I just, just for my own, like, benefit, just how much time we've already asked Styles to put into this and then we're just changing our minds. But, you know, it's okay if, you know, I, I agree with the direction that you're going. I, I just want to be sensitive also to just doing it, Robbie, without a lot of conversation with the person with Styles, who we've already interviewed.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And, and along those same lines, are we able to, and I know that Chris said he didn't know if maybe this was the best way to go about what we wanted to do, and this was really just giving us more time to discuss. Is there a way that we're able to use this vehicle in front of us as a way to just continue those discussions and discuss the other options that Styles would like to maybe amend the agreement with? I mean, do we need to throw the baby out with the bathwater or can we actually just use this vehicle to get to where we want to go?
No, because this is only, this is only to continue the discussions to refine the their, to refine their response to the RFP, which is a lease agreement for the parking garage. We need to throw the baby out with the bathwater.
Okay, I just was trying to figure out if we could just use this vehicle. So that's true. Alan, we can't use this vehicle to get to where we want to go?
Right, although technically you could designate a date in the future for the lease approval, it would have, in good faith, be for us to negotiate a lease for this proposal. For us to have discussions with Style, to come up with new ideas, would circumvent the process set up in 8.09, which really is designed for us to put out there our intent and then receive bids and then choose, choose a bidder and that process is set forth in the charter.
Right, so it, it has to be a completely different process going forward.
Okay.
And I'll add, just to close that discussion, since we're talking about housing as an option, that was explored and as I understand it, the structure as it's currently built would not support from an engineering perspective, a, a design that would allow it to go vertical, so.
Okay.
So, so I need some clarification, Mayor.
What's that?
I guess, oh, what we originally voted on the lease. What was the in resolution, what that parking lot would be in that lease? Was it a shops and that type of stuff?
It was.
Shops and parking, yeah.
It's all it was.
Upgraded shops, Commissioner, like a new and improved retail.
Right, and so now we want to stop that and entertain a possible housing opportunity.
Some kind of more intense development for that site.
And when we did this, it was with Styles, am I correct?
Well, no, we put out an RFP and they responded to the RFP and they were.
Are they the only ones?
No, Commissioner, there was two others. Total of three.
So we're not really obligated to those respondents? If we took a different route?
If we took a different route, you'd probably find quite a few more respondents and with much different concept. And since we're gonna re, we want to reimagine that space now.
So now I want to go back, one thing that the city manager said, now, Chris, you tried to convince us to keep it moving forward. Explain that to me a little more so I understand what, why I should support what you're saying.
I think he's taking that back, Commissioner.
No.
Now I want to hear what he has to say.
I brought that up is because tonight's, to the attorney's point, good faith is, is something that's very important, but tonight's item that is in front of you is not to approve or disapprove a project. It is to take what was originally the night that the contract, the lease agreement was going to come back before the commission, which was scheduled to be today, and move that due diligence period out until April. So just to give us continued time to negotiate. So there was no approval of a project, yea or nay, tonight. It was just to allow more time. But if truly this commission from a policy perspective has decided that this is no longer a project that is desired, I would encourage us to quickly put on the brakes and, and, and stop whatever forward momentum there is. I do know that Styles has hired contractors. I know they've hired consultants to do some pretty significant structural review as they put together their plan. So if, if this commission has decided that this is the wrong project here, then it does make sense tonight to, to go ahead and, and take that action.
Okay. Did he answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Okay, call the roll.
One last question, sorry. Can we change our minds back if we don't like the new proposals that come in?
Yes, you can.
Sure, yes.
So, I mean, that's.
You'd still have to go, you'd have to start the process all over again. And, and again, if you do that too many times, you may get less proposals because obviously people are spending money and then pulling back and starting again. So it would still have to be part of a process. So if we, if we make a decision on how, what we want to do, and let's say we proceed under 809 once again, we should be proceeding with pretty certain what we want, because then if we pull back again, then you'd have to start it all over again with another concept.
All right, thank you.
Okay, please call the roll.
A resolution in the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, extending the date representing the lease agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale as less sore and Styles Corporation as less see for the property located at 100 Southeast First Street and 155 Southeast Second Street, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33301, from December 15, 2020 to April 20, 2021, repealing any and all resolutions in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Moritas?
No.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
No.
Commissioner McKenzie?
No.
Commissioner Stevenson?
No.
Mayor Trent House?
No, and the item is, is not approved. CP1, Commissioner Sorenson.
Yep, thanks, Mayor. So, Chris, I think it might be helpful for Raj to help us with this one.
Raj, are you on the line?
Even better.
He's in person. He's, Raj is beautiful.
Raj, imagine. So, Mayor.
Hold on a second, wait till you get to the podium. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. So, thanks, Raj. So Raj, as, as you and I have emailed River Oaks Civic Association, brought forward some concerns about the, the change order and just some of the damage that, that's happened in their neighborhood. I don't know, you've had a chance to, you know, review that and talk through it. So just if you could help kind of maybe just summarize their concerns, Raj, just so that the commission's aware and then kind of your thoughts on how we can mitigate those concerns and, and those impacts they've had.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Raj, Public Works. Commissioner Sorenson, I will, to be honest with you, I'm not going to, you know, come here and defend the staff. Many of these things, they should have been caught early in the design phase. Unfortunately, this is a project that spans over many years. It has gone through many project managers and, and we have a situation where it is a grant-funded project that needs to get completed. You know, by the, we got, we were lucky, we got extension, but this has to happen. You know, by the deadline. Now, the staff, when, when this thing came through, even for the change order one, change order two, I was not happy. I quizzed the project managers very extensively and they said that these items, they should have been on the plans before. And they were, they got missed and therefore you see the change order. The change order one, although it is not the subject of, of today, but the change order one required some, some changes requested by the FDOT and, and the environmental people. So I let it go. This time I spent a lot more time and, and the rationale was that, you know, there are certain activities that were missed in the original design. So assuming for a moment that these design elements, they would have been present at the time when we went out for bids. And these items, if they were required, and they are required, some of them, then let's say we would have gotten a good price or competitive price of $50,000 or $60,000. We are now paying $90,000. So we are paying the difference, the premium difference, because these things have happened during the construction and, 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 you know, we are at the mercy of the contractor and it is recommended by our CEI. So recognizing that we could have avoided this if we were paid more attention at the beginning and, and it did not happen, I have to make a business decision that I have got a project worth over a million and a half dollars, $2 million with a grant funding and deadline to meet. And, and it is also tied to some of our mitigation projects that we are requiring for our, our meeting, the sewer mitigation project. So putting all these factors together, you know, for that amount, you know, that I can, I can get into the argument with the contractors, the consultant, and drag it out. And at the end, I will be, you know, will be the loser. So as a business decision, this is my recommendation that we move forward. We have compiled all the answers that the community has asked and, and will be happy to share with them. And the project managers have provided the answers. Some may be acceptable, some maybe not. And I go, I'm I'm going to go back and say that this is a business decision that I am recommending that we move forward. But if anyone wants to have the detailed answers, I will personally be more than willing to sit down with them and explain. And, and we will share, you know, the responses are there. I can probably make them a part of the doc, the record, or we can transmit to the community. But I do want to applaud the community for paying such detailed attention. And, and I agree with them and, but unfortunately, at this point in time, I need to move forward.
Thanks, Raj. So, yeah, I'm, and I'm comfortable moving forward and the, especially the damage that's happened to yards and swales and so forth. We've really got to have that fixed and fencing and so forth as much as possible, as soon as possible, rather than waiting the, the 70 days and so forth.
So, so Commissioner Sorenson, what I'm going to do, I will go with my staff. And, and, and this is what I have, you know, throughout my career I have done. And, and it's always that, you know, we create a sort of a workforce that rather than get into a situation that our, our, our people are able to take care of some of these minor things that otherwise could end up in large change orders. So I will work with the community. I'll work with our project managers and see how best we can mitigate and as quickly as we can.
Okay, great. Thanks, Raj. And Nancy, have you been in touch with Nancy Long? She's the president there.
Nancy has signed up to speak and I'm going to be calling on her in just a moment.
Okay, so that's, so Raj, you, me and Nancy can work, you know, work closely on this, but.
Absolutely.
Great. So if you just hang by and the mayor, we can, you know, if you, if you're, if you'd like, Mayor, to hear from Nancy and then that way Raj and I can address any concerns Nancy has.
Great. Nancy? Thank you for being here tonight.
Hello, I'm Nancy Long with President of the River Oaks Civic Association. This is our third year, my third year here and we've, we've got groups together that are working on issues and things that stress everybody out. And they don't think the city pays attention and trust me, I protect you. I say, yes, they do, but they just have to know. So this became one of the group's obsession with this preserve because of maybe the truck drivers driving through the neighborhood, speeding, running over animals, chasing people off the street, tearing up their swells. And we were given a traffic designation for these trucks, but they aren't using it. They're just cutting through and knocking down street signs and they, they get out and they're rude to the neighbors. So that's why all this became a, a big issue. And we were okay with it and I wasn't getting calls for a while because it was promised to be done at the end of the job. But as soon as this change order come out and they said, oh, no more days, everybody freaked out. So we just feel that even though it's a bonded job, the bond should not pay for damages that the contractor and subcontractors created. Especially that the contractor explicitly indicates that the contractor would pay to repair the damages immediately. And it's a census that the neighbors feel that the contractor should abide by his contract. And basically, I think if they would just be nice, not tear through our streets, not chase the peacocks, honk all the time and fix the damage they do it. And when they do it, just don't get out, move the people's barricades and then tear off and, and back up and forth. It's, it's horrible. So I think if they would just be more courteous and slow down and observe it's a residential area, that everybody would calm down again. So that is why this was brought to your attention. And it was like 15 people that went over the contract and came up with all the comments and I'm here to represent them.
All right, great. Well, thank you so much. We appreciate you being here tonight.
Thanks, thanks, Nancy. So Raj, you, you and Nancy and me can get together and, and work on this? Is that fair?
Would you like to introduce the item?
Yes, please.
The motion approving the change order number two. So you've made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Mayor, I do have a question, but I'll second it.
Okay, great. Your question?
Yes, and this is for Chris and Raj as well. And in fact, what Nancy just said about the contract, you know, this name Continental Construction USA comes up a lot, also in my district. We seem to have this name in front of us when we have issues with change orders, when we have issues with contracts, when we have issues with scope of service. Are we going to like evaluate why we're constantly having problems with this particular vendor or, I mean, do they need to be held accountable in a different way? But this is a pattern that seems to be developing with, with this group. So is it just, you know, me that I'm noticing this? Or, I mean, what is the issue with this, with this vendor?
So Vice Mayor, I think I'll take a stab at a response. You know, we've got this project and you're also seeing this contractor with a mobility hub. I've often said that what is a commission meeting without a mobility hub item on it, tonight is no exception. I'd like to get both of these projects done and then I do intend on reviewing with procurement the performance of the contractor. So, but I, I think the first thing to do is to get the two projects done.
Okay, good. And I do want to make sure that they're held accountable for their end of the contract and what they need to do, especially with regards to a lot of this mitigation that we're hearing about. But yeah, I, I'm just concerned because I keep reading their name and there's always associated problems. Thank you, Chris.
Your concern is shared.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, there's been, there's a motion and a second on the floor. You want to please call the roll?
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, and the item is approved. Thank you so much. And thank you all for being here. We really appreciate it. And Nancy, thank you for showing up tonight. We appreciate it. it. Moving on to M1, motion approving an amendment to extend the expiration date of fiscal year 2020 Beach Business Improvement District. One person who signed up to speak, Tasha Cunningham. Tasha, are you on the line?
Yes.
Tasha, can you unmute yourself?
Okay, hold on one second. All right, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Actually, I don't need to speak on this item. I'm the new manager for the Beach Improvement District. We actually met the other night, Mayor, at the lighting of the Christmas tree. And so I thought we would have to speak, but it turns out that we actually don't have to speak on this item, so I'm okay.
Great. All right, thank you. Would someone like to move the item? Vice Mayor?
Yes, I'll move it, but I also had a question. Thank you.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Please wake up. Okay, you have a second. Very good. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, Vice Mayor, do you have a few thoughts?
Yes, not my thoughts. I'm just passing this on from my pre-agenda meeting, but it came up last night. I thought I'd pass it along from one of the residents. They actually used your name, Mayor. They said that they remembered a while ago, the mayor wanted to see a cost analysis of the show and how the monies that we are spending through the bid, how that has affected the show. And I said, yeah, I don't remember the mayor ever asking that. Maybe you do. But they wanted to know if that cost analysis was ever done to your satisfaction.
I've never seen it. I kind of wanted not just a cost analysis, but I wanted to see, I wanted to see the balance sheet of what income the show has received and what expenditures they have. I've never seen that. Because we contribute financially, we'd like to see where the money goes.
Yes, no, understood. And again, I'm just passing that along. That question did come up. And so I say, well, I'll certainly pass that along. So thank you. Maybe we could one day get that. But see, Mayor, people are remembering when you request things and you're not getting them.
Well, I guess people listen to me. So thank you. I appreciate knowing that.
Welcome.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Maritis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the motions approved are won. We have
Comments from Vice Mayor Glassman for the Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board, Charlene Gunn, Luis Castillo, and Robert Hayen. For tonight's resolution, Affordable Housing Advisory Committee Nancy Daly, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Audit Advisor Board Joey Epstein, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. Citizens Committee of Recognition, Commissioner Romney Rogers, nominated by, as consensus, I think, oh, yeah, that was Commissioner Sorenson. Community Appearance Board Lorraine O'Neill, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Community Services Board Mary Kinerons, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. And April Kirk, also nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Economic Development Advisory Board, Michael Buena Judo, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Dudley ETN Harvard, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. And Michael Sterro, nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman. Education Advisory Board Vicky Melis, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. Fire Rescue Facilities Bond Issue Blue Ribbon Committee, John Versinis, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. Marine Advisory Board Chris Rotella, nominated by Commissioner Maritis. Parks, Recs, and Beaches Gregory Martin, nominated by Commissioner Maritis. Sustainability Advisory Board Carol Ann Mazza, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. And Susan Wood, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. And that rounds it out.
Commissioner Maritis, someone had approached me to be on the Education Advisory Board, and I don't have an opening. I see that you do. So if you find that looking for someone to nominate, let me know. I have a very good candidate for you.
Thank you. I don't think I do. I just appointed Heather Rinkworth. Do I? Okay, do I, you think I still have another one?
I don't know.
I don't think I do, because Heather was just read on our last commission. But I'll check. And if I do, we'll talk.
Okay, very good. Someone like to introduce the resolution? Someone like to introduce the resolution? Okay.
A resolution in the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating applicable board and committee members, as set forth in the exhibit attached here too and made a part here of Commissioner Maritis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. And congratulations to those people that have agreed to be part of the boards and the committees. We appreciate your commitment to the city. R2, okay, this is going to be a quasi judicial resolution approving a plat known as 2980 West State Road 84, located coincidentally at 2980 West State Road 84. This is the Robert L. Elmore Trust with Pamela K. Hayes as trustee. Wishing to speak must be sworn in. Commissioner will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. I have a couple of people that have signed up to speak. I'm not sure if these are people just connected with the company. I think they are. Eric Metz, Dina Gray, and Michael Guy. Are you folks just here? I think you just here.
Dina Gray is asking to be recognized.
She has to be recognized. Dina Gray, are you there?
I'm here. I'm Land Use Council for the applicant.
Okay, if we have any questions, you're there to answer them?
Yes, as well as Eric Metz, owner rep. And we also have Mike Gay, our civil engineer, if there's any questions.
Great. So let's do our disclosures first. Commissioner Maritis, do you have any disclosures?
I have no disclosures.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
No disclosures.
Commissioner McKenzie? Have to unmute yourself. Unmute yourself, Commissioner. He just turned off his camera. Commissioner McKenzie, any disclosures?
None. I was having a little technical difficulty.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes, I met with applicant.
I don't think I've met with the applicant. Dina, did we meet at all on this?
No, I don't believe we have.
No, okay, I didn't think so. I have no disclosures. Okay, so if there are no questions or anything, and can I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Commissioner Maritis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Yes, public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion to approve the item?
So move.
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
A resolution in the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a plat entitled 2980 West State Road 84 and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Maritis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that item is approved. Congratulations. Okay, so we now Okay, we now move on to ordinances of first reading. This is OFR1, First Reading of an Ordinance Amending Chapter Two, entitled Administration of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale relating to procurement.
Hold on, do we have to go to PH1 first?
Yeah.
There's a related item on PH1.
It's a two-part deal, Mayor. It's weird, but yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's the same person, it's just a different action.
I missed it. Okay.
Yeah.
PH1. This is a public hearing, quasi judicial ordinance approving a rezoning from Intense Manufacturing Industrial M3 of the Broward County zoning code and heavy commercial light industrial business B3 to City General Industrial District known as 2890 West State Road 84 rezoning relocated at 2980 West State Road 84, the Robert L. Elmore Trust, Pamela K. Hayes trustee. Again, anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in and the commissioner will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, make them a part of the record. Same disclosures as before, everybody?
Yep. And Mayor, if I could just add one piece about this, this is a really, this is a job creator here in the city. It's going to be about seventy folks. They're going to develop, fabricate seawalls that folks can use to counter the effects of global warming and sea level rise. And one of the really fascinating parts about the seawalls that they're going to create, they're called living walls, living walls. In other words, they're fabricating them in a way that will allow marine life to actually adhere to the seawalls, live in parts of the seawalls, and create a more positive environment that will allow for greater marine life and also the filtering and cleaning of our water at the same time by allowing for the reproduction of more marine life in and on those seawalls.
So is this just, is this, let me start again. Is this project just on site? Or is this something that can be shared throughout the city on private seawalls in people's backyards?
Exactly. So they will fabricate, the prefabricated seawalls will be made at this site, put on a barge and trucks and shipped to whatever can be shipped to your house for the right price and installed on your seawall or anyone else's, residential or commercial.
So it's something, is it the seawall material itself? Or is it something that's like an overlay on the seawall?
It's the former. It's the actual seawall.
It's the actual seawall and is made of a substance that will attract sea life?
Exactly. With crevices and places within the seawall, rather than just this flat concrete surface, it allows for marine life to attach, live in, and engage. And one of the things I talked with them about was, as I'm sure you all are familiar with, is this idea of the Mike Lambretts and others are doing the oyster, the oysters have a cleaning mechanism and cleaning the water. And so is that something that could attach to this as well? So there's a lot of exciting possibilities.
So this is really consistent with one of our goals, which is to try to encourage more marine life in our waterways. I'm wondering if we can almost make this a requirement as a material that we need to, if someone wants to rebuild their seawall, that this, either make a requirement or provide incentives to encourage people to want to use this as a material. I wonder if it costs any more or less than regular concrete?
What they informed me is that it's very competitive with regular production seawall.
Okay, we might consider this as going down the road as either something to incentivize or as a requirement as we try to encourage the use of marine life.
I'd like to learn about it.
Sounds great.
I love that idea, man. I didn't even think about that. Yep.
Okay, so again, no one signed up to speak. So do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Move.
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Maritis? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, public hearing is now closed. Do I hear, can someone please introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Introduced.
An ordinance amending section 47-1.6. B of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, Unified Land Development Regulation. Through the revision of the official zoning map of the city, we will own Schedule A revised compilation attached thereto and by reference made a part thereof, so as to rezone from M3 Intense Manufacturing and Industrial District of the Broward County zoning code and B3 Heavy Commercial Light Industrial Business District to I General Industrial District, a portion of West one-half of Section 20 Township 50, South Range 42 East adjacent to Interstate 595 bounded on the west by parcel A Lauderdale Propeller, according to the plat there of recorded in Plat Book 183, page 162 of the public records of Broward County, Florida, and also the south fork of the New River bounded on the east by the west line, Port 95 Commerce Park, according to the plat there of recorded in Plat Book 144, page two of the public records of Broward County, Florida, bounded on the south by the south line of the north half, of the north half of southwest quarter of Section 20 bounded on the north by the south right away line, State Road 84. All said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Maritis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Commissioner McKenzie, please unmute yourself. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes, I was fading it out. So it wasn't me. It's technology. Drink water.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the item is now approved. Good luck with the project. Now on to ordinances of first reading. The first reading of the ordinance amending Chapter Two, entitled Administration of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale relating to procurement. Anyone have any questions with regard to this item? There being none, someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
Please call the roll.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending Division Two of Article Five of Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, to wit the City Fort Lauderdale procurement ordinance by creating definitions of disadvantaged business enterprise and small business, revising exclusions from the mandatory commission approval amount and the competitive solicitation processes, revising the chief procurement duties, responsibilities, authorizations, and accountabilities, creating disadvantaged business enterprise preference program, and limiting the combination of the disadvantaged business enterprise preference and local business preference to ten percent and providing for severability, repeal conflicting ordinance provisions, and an effective date. Commissioner Maritis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the ordinance is approved on first reading. OFR2, this is an ordinance creating Article 10, Landlord Registration Program of Chapter Nine. This item is being requested for deferral to January 5, 2021. Alan, do we need a motion to do this?
Please.
Move to defer to January 5, 2021.
Second.
Second.
There you go.
I love it when the commission takes matters into their own hands.
We're going to come in strong on this one.
Exactly.
And it needs to be date certain, right?
I said January 5, 2021. Heck of a way to end 2020. Right. Move to adjourn.
We're a can-do commission. Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Maritis? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the ordinance is approved on first reading. Excuse, back up. And the ordinance is deferred till January 5, 2021. Sorry, jumping ahead. Okay, so for those who are still celebrating Hanukkah, I wish you all the best and happy, healthy holiday season to you. Those celebrating Christmas, I hope we wish you all a Merry Christmas and to everybody a Happy New Year, a healthy New Year. Let's make 2021, 2020 was supposed to be, ribbon cuttings and dedications we were supposed to have. Let's make sure, please stay healthy, please stay safe. Vaccines around the corner. You don't want to be a victim right away. You can be protected. So let's all care for one another. And thank you all, everybody, for returning me to office. And I speak also on behalf of the Vice Mayor and everybody on the commission. We wish you all a very happy and healthy New Year.
Amen.
Amen.